Do you want the case number? Do you want the case number?
Not yet. Sir, I'm sorry, we haven't started our meeting, we're gonna follow format.
We'll let you know when we're ready.
Okay, good, thank you.
We will ask you to speak, thank you.
They're not ready yet.
We'll call this meeting of July 14th to order. Whose people at the computer? Members of the zoning board of appeals are myself, Joseph Burke, chairperson, Nat Speck, Frank Donato, Wendy Tarver, and Michael Wolf. Along with Patty DeCarr from Urban and Economic Development, Dan Colza, Chief Building Inspector, and Kate Hartnett, Assistant Corporation Counsel. We will hear each case individually as it appears on the agenda. When your case is called, please speak up. State your name, address, and address for the record. After listening to your proposal, I will ask for speakers for and against the project. All remarks and any questions are to be addressed to board members only. We will then vote on the project immediately following. Okay, first case, ZBA case number 2020. 1680 Wesley Avenue, applicant Lindsay Kazar, owner Lindsay Kazar.
Yes.
Well, hold on a minute. Section 2-29. Zoning ordinance of the city of Utica. Applicant is seeking an area variance in order to erect a fence at the above referenced location. Okay, Lindsay Kazar, if you want to state your case, please, you can speak.
Um, yeah, we just want to replace the four foot fence we have with a six foot wood fence.
So as you can see on your screen, you can see that fence, everyone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Looking to replace that with a solid fence.
Now, that's a corner lot, right Patty?
Uh, you can see there's the corner.
Okay.
And it is all the way out sidewalk.
And you want to go to six foot fence along the sidewalk as well?
Correct.
Hey Patty's there, I hear.
Any questions, board?
It's... Okay, is there a driveway on that side down towards your neighbor's house in the blue?
No. No, the driveway's on the other side of the blue house.
Hey, can you hear it?
No, the blue house, it was something I decided to make you...
I don't know, six foot high fence along the sidewalk like that?
Right against the sidewalk.
Yeah.
I'm seeing it's a corner house. My only concern is that a six foot right to the sidewalk is gonna kinda, um, with traffic coming up to that corner.
That close to the corner?
Yeah, this...
Close to the corner.
There's, I don't know how much...
That's quite a bit of front yard in between the fence and the corner of the road.
Okay, I can see it now.
Who's speaking now? Hold on a minute, who's speaking now, I'm sorry.
That's my husband, Mike.
Okay, okay.
And we already had removed a whole bunch of bushes that were, that were literally along the road to that, um, obstructed vision.
Joe, this is Mike. It doesn't look like it's kinda obstruct vision. And the tree on the property kind of prevents them from moving it backwards. I know we don't usually put them right along the sidewalk, but it doesn't look like, yeah. It's, they'd have to come all the way back to the other side of the tree or remove the tree and go through it if we don't, if they, we don't let them put it on that line.
All right, anyone for or against? No one else is online, okay.
Against.
Against?
Sorry, what is your name?
Yeah, I guess...
I'm sorry?
Tell him you're against, he wants to...
Uh, my name is Luke Anthony Medici. I live at 1604 Goodrich Street. Uh, this is a residential...
This is for West...
Who have West Virginia?
What?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I didn't know, you don't, you listen to all this?
We're going in order of the agenda, just to let you know. We're on the first, number 20-20. Are there any speakers against the prop, the proposal for 1680 Wesley Ave?
This is crazy.
We're gonna say it too.
They could have been down there with, the people behind the block. This is crazy. You made me listen to all this?
All right, whoa, whoa, let's hold on a minute here, hold on a minute. Until you're, anyone who's online that's not pertaining to this case, turn the speakers, the amplifiers, microphone, turn it off. We only want to hear information that pertains to the case that we're talking about. Follow the agenda.
You don't need to call back. You just need to mute your telephone.
Hey, hey, hey.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, all right, we don't have anyone for or against, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any motion?
Question, uh, Joe?
Yeah, Joe, it's Mike, I'll make a motion we approve, it doesn't look like it's gonna interfere with anything.
Okay, any second.
Joe, I'll second.
But you...
Yes, it's great, second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Ned, you out there?
Yeah.
It's Kazar, but you'll have to get a fence permit through our code department. You can get a call tomorrow, the phone number is 315-792-0163. And they can assist you with getting your permit, okay?
I thought, wait, I thought we already got the permit.
Did you receive a fence permit already?
Yeah.
Then it'll have to be, it will have to be modified because it was obviously incorrect.
Okay.
Take another call and you'll get everything straightened out tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, what is the phone number again, I'm sorry? Thank you.
Welcome.
Are we all set?
ZBA, you're outside.
Thank you.
You're welcome. ZBA case 23-20. 137 Haxington Drive, applicant Nicole Law. Pursuant to section 2-29. Applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct at the above referenced location. Patty, I got a whole bunch of other things on my screen here. Oh, here we go. There's the application for the area variance.
Yep, hold on one sec.
Ms. Law, are you on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You want to state your case?
Yeah, we, my husband and I were looking to build a 20 by nine foot deck on the front of our home. Um, just pressure treated lumber. With, um, with no roof.
Okay.
This is, this is a picture of their home.
Yep, that's it.
All right.
And here is the deck that proposes...
Could be more like a front porch.
Yes.
Okay. 20 by nine, all right.
It ends up being, if you see the front picture, it ends up being just the full length of the house.
Of the house.
Yep, and it extends right into the garage.
Yep. Anybody have any question? Anyone here, anyone online that's for the project? Anyone online that's against the project? From the appearance of your house, I'm sure you're gonna, the deck is gonna look just as nice as the house.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You're outside, good luck.
Thank you so much.
You'll have to get a building permit for this, so you'll have to take code department as well tomorrow. Uh, against 315-792-0163.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, have a great evening.
You as well.
Okay, ZBA. ZBA case 24-20. 2429 Shenango Street, applicant Park Outdoor Advertising. Pursuant to section 2-2968 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica. Applicant is seeking a special use permit and an area variance in order to erect a billboard at the above referenced location. Okay, who's here from Park Outdoor?
Uh, Matt Stubbly, VP General Manager, 2429 Shenango Street, Utica. Um, as you know, we purchased this property during the relocation process for the downtown hospital. And consequently, we're gonna be losing relatively soon, seven more cases down there. And we already lost one at Urbanics. So naturally, we're trying to have some coverage for the businesses that want to advertise in our market. And we feel that the Shenango Street address would be a good location to have additional coverage. So we're proposing a back-to-back, um, static billboard upon our property. And we're requesting the licenses for the size and for the location 'cause we do have a billboard that shows to the arterial. But this board will only show, you know, within 500 people, this will only show to Shenango Street.
This will only show on Shenango Road, or Street rather?
Yes, correct.
How, how close to the road is this thing gonna be, any, do we have any idea?
It's a street. What's that?
Matt, can you explain that to them, how close to the road you're gonna be?
Oh, uh, we're gonna be within our fence line to Shenango Street. Um, and we're eight feet off our fence line, and we also have an additional eight feet on the other side of the fence line. So we're probably 16 feet from any right away, and there's, there's utility pole there, so we have to be at least 15 feet away from that anyways. Um, but it'll all be, nothing will overhang our property line at all.
So this is only gonna be shown, be visible from Shenango Street? Is that much traffic that it's gonna benefit your customers?
Yeah, actually, actually, surprisingly, the, the count that goes through there, it's, sometimes, uh, depending, you can go on, um, near state data traffic viewer and gives you counts, but it's showing 6,500 cars a day, and it's, it's surprising when you think of it. I think a lot of people use that when they, when they, when they cut through over to the mills and such. And we always are seeking, uh, well, we have businesses seeking city coverage. When they buy, um, they buy a GRP marketing plan that gives you effective reach to the population. And some are on the lower end streets and some are on the higher end, but the mix gives them the coverage they're looking for. And certainly would benefit us, but also, also, uh, businesses that want to get their, get their word out.
How high will it be?
It was, I think, 30 feet?
Yeah, 30 feet. Where, where may, in relation, you provided these photos, where in relation is it going to be for these photos?
Yeah, the photo you have right there, you see that dump trailer next to that pole barn there?
Yep.
Yes.
Midway in that, the column be about midway into that dump trailer. Those trees will be trimmed down, but we're gonna keep the trees around fence line because obviously we have a lot of storage, we want to make sure the place looks deep tidy. Um, but yeah, does the column be there, and the back end of it will be, will be about two feet shy of the pole barn?
How high is that on the pole barn?
The pole barn, the pole barn, uh, to the lower, it's, um, it's a, um, salt box. To the lower level, I believe is 34 feet, and the upper one, I'd have to look up, I think it's, I might be, I don't think I can read that. But, but I think the, the people don't have... Yes, definitely.
Is it a digital billboard?
No, static, static only, the traffic count isn't that high. I wish it was.
You're saying, you're saying the building's 34 feet high? I'm sorry, this is Frank.
That's, that's, that's the pole barn, um, I might have pulled that one up, but I, I don't have that, that was a...
Cause that's probably a 12 foot door.
I think it's, apologize for not having that one next year. Um, hang on.
And it's gonna be double sided, back-to-back, correct?
Yes, yeah. Much the same as the one we did on, on Broad Street at City Vino's property. They're pretty much standard. Uh, do not, I'm looking for my pole barn, like, I don't have any handy, to be honest with you. Wait a minute, I do have, I do have it, bear with me. Uh, those are, uh, those are 14 foot doors, and it's, it's overall size. May have to, I don't, overall height. Yeah, I don't have the overall height for that pole barn in this drawing that I had of it.
Ned, what would you say the height of that barn is?
That's what I'm trying to look at right now, that you can hit the, hit the...
Um, it's about 25 feet maybe, at the most.
Excuse me?
This is not, I, I mean, I would estimate that that's about 25 feet at the most.
It may be, may be right about that, it's, it's taller.
It would make more sense that the sign's gonna be lower than that, than that, uh, roof of that barn, so it's gotta be...
It's gotta be right above the, fine, I would say.
It might, you know, I mean, as I'm looking at the original drawing, it may be, it may come up about four feet above the top, above that, I think, I think you'd find it blend, blend into that peak about, you know? I actually, actually thought the bottom was under that.
So it is gonna be higher than the barn?
You know, I, I would say precaution, cautionary, I would say yes, I, but I, I'd like to think it wasn't, but I don't have the exact measurement.
That makes more sense.
Yeah. Yeah, you get into, cause I've got, I've got the doors, I've got the doors, I've got the doors at 14, and I've probably got, um, that's the front, that's one door on that side, and you see, that's a, that door there, you see they got there four or five feet before that, where that salt box, so if that's a 14 foot door, you're 19 or 20 feet to that. You're probably, you're probably gonna be, probably gonna be about four feet higher than that, you got four feet. I think that's, I think that's a fair assumption.
Seeking a special use permit for the, for the bill... For the overall size, um, 100 feet is permitted, he's seeking 574 feet along with fence from another billboard, he's seeking an area variance for that also.
Correct.
And how high was the, was the sign, the, what's the height of it? The sign itself?
Top of the sign is 30 feet, the, the actual physical face is 12 by 24. So 20, 12 feet high, 24 feet wide.
Okay.
Again, if you see, if you see those trees in the picture, our plan is obviously to trim them, um, keep them at fence height around there, cause when we moved over here, the one... Because when we moved over here, the one thing that hurt us was we didn't have a really large yard for our storage. Whereas on Lafayette, we did, so kind of making deal with that. The building's fantastic, and we're able to stay in the city, which is great. But we're conscious of how our yard looks, so we're gonna make sure that, you know, we keep them intact, and not do anything more that'll affect, you know, how we look when we put the sign up.
You guys usually give us a picture of the sign, and, and, uh.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think with this web thing, I, I made a photo there, because usually, we, usually what we do is, and I just, I sent email, I put a drawing of one over to Patty about an hour ago, which is bad. Usually what I do is I try to provide one of those, and the only one I saw was a thirty-six-foot sign, so I didn't want to cause confusion, so I did scan and send one over at thirty foot, just to get the drawing, what it looks like. And then at building time, we have to provide a stamped architectural drawing of it. The hard part is you can't, you know, you pay for the drawing, so it's good to have that. So I don't know, I don't know if you have that right there, Patty, I apologize for the lateness of it, but, uh, it's getting sent one over, and it might be a cold one.
Just trying, so it was hard to view, but, um, Matt, what is this photo of building, where in relation is the sign going to that?
Oh, once again, once again, you see this dump trailer in there? That's the same dump trailer that I was talking about, being midway in it. The pole barn that we're looking at is to the left, there's two buildings on the property, that's our main shop and office we're looking at. And then right where that dump trailer is in the left corner, behind that, is that pole barn that we were figuring the height in relation to the sign. So.
Where?
Excuse me?
Where is the road?
The road, the road in this picture would be to your right.
Okay.
Right?
To the right, yeah, this, this picture is facing south. You go back to, now, if you go, yeah, that's the one thing, yeah, there's facing north. Yeah, so we got two buildings that, we tried to make them look a little bit similar with color and style, the pole barn and our shop. Um, but that's that same, see that dump trailer back there, to the left of the, of the door? That's the one you saw in the, in the face of south corner, that's what the column is in.
Man, those are your trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, again, I mean, I'm only talking about down enough to view the sign, and not enough to, you know what I mean? It's, uh, we like to keep our place looking good. Got a lot of metal up there.
Okay, any other questions, board?
I think the sign would be closer to your property line towards the rear off the garage.
Yes, the right, as you're facing, if you're standing, if you're standing facing Shenango Road, the, it would be about twenty feet off the rear property line.
Did you say twenty feet?
Yes.
Hey, Matt, hey, you know, you know, turn on your microphone?
No.
I'm just, I, 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 I mean, I'm just curious, why you didn't go closer, since you need the storage space, where you plan on storing stuff on the rear sign?
How close is the property line?
Yeah, that's what I said, but you pull it twenty feet away from property line, and all of a sudden, you gotta pull it in front of you, because I would say that thing, you know, would you say sixteen feet wide?
There, whether what works for us is two things, there, there's two doors on that side of the pole barn, so the column would be roughly in the middle of the doors. And then there's, um, then we can give a partial V structure, which makes it show better to the road. You know, not just straight back-to-back, get partial V.
Utilize the space underneath.
Yeah. It's tight, it's tight, we gotta, I tell you what, we love our, we love our office, we love our stuff, but the, 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 for us is the yard, because when we bring in materials to do things, you know, it's kind of tight compared to, compared to where we were before, you know? But much prettier.
I just don't have a camera, so they can see you.
I'm sorry?
All right, anyone here for the project? Anyone against?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you say your name for me?
My name's Richard Pierce, I'm the owner of two four two seven Shenango Road.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
My name is Richard Pierce, I'm the owner of the next door property, two four two seven Shenango.
What's the address on Shenango?
Next door, two four two seven.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is this sign going on the east or west end of the property? I couldn't tell.
Well, it's, it's more like the south or east, southeast. Do you know where, do you know where pole barn is?
Yes.
On that side of the property. Are you on that side of the property, or, or the other side?
I'm on, I'm on your east end.
Towards, towards the dominoes.
That's my building, correct?
Nice, nice building. Um, yeah, it's, it'd be on that end, yes.
Okay, so how close would your proposed sign be to the existing one, uh, in that parking lot?
Um, I didn't measure that, but I could do that relatively quick on Google Earth, I have up, if you'd like. I think we're higher than that, so I don't think we'd block you at all, I never viewed that as any package issue.
You don't think, or you know?
But if you guys want, I got Google Earth, I can measure that, like, in two seconds. Actually.
What, what I'm concerned about is, I have an existing sign there now. It's been there since I bought the building in oh six. Uh, and I'm concerned that that would affect our current signage. My other comment is, if it's going to be thirty feet, you will absolutely see that from the arterial, because you can see mine clear as day from the arterial.
Um, I, I think, I think I should clarify, viewing it, you probably see the physical sign, but it's not where you'd be reading the advertisement and such, that's not our intent.
Regardless of where you can see the sign from, let's address the Shenango Street issues, all right? Whether you see it from the arterial or not, it's not a question here. So what is your concern, Mr. Pierce, that it's gonna block, it's gonna block the sign, is that it?
The sign that has, that has been there, bought the building.
That you bought the building.
And it would, it would affect that signage.
Roughly, roughly fifty-two feet from your sign, and your sign would be offset, yours is, yours is more towards the east, as ours would be more towards the west, if that's, if we look at Shenango Road being south. I just looked at it, and, but, but I don't think you see it now, but, hey, I don't know.
Oh, that's my concern, it would affect the current signage.
Only on a second case.
How tall is your sign, sir?
There's like six or seven cases, you're one of the last ones.
Actually.
Do you know how tall your sign is, Mr. Pierce?
No, I do not know how tall it is.
Actually, us, I mean, I'm sorry to interrupt, as I was talking to the chairman, but actually, our, our clearing some of those trees will probably help your sign a bit, even if ours does come in a little bit, which I can't say it will or it won't.
I guess I'd just like a little more confirmation, I'd like to be able to picture, and I haven't been able to do so, yet.
You know, you know, you know what I think, because without, the picture that we're looking at now is really, I, I, I wish we can have like a, a view looking down Shenango Street of Mr. Pierce's sign and the proposed park sign, and see where it's going, how like, how it's gonna lay out. Uh, I'd be good, I'd be okay with handling this.
I think. You, you can see his sign, actually.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with tabling, I prefer a thing, but I think you can see it in that, 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 you see the U-Haul picture in our proposed sign map, and you see the dominoes thumb up, their sign. Yeah, we'd have, to be honest with you, it'd probably be the best thing to do is, my guys, if you don't mind, Mr. Pierce, we could, we could actually go over and measure the height of your sign, and maybe come up with a, a different.
Rendering of, of what's going on there, that'd be great.
Yeah, that'd be fine with me.
If it works for everyone, I'm all for it.
Right. Mr. Pierce, do you have, do you have a number I can contact you at, so we can make arrangements to go measure that and everything?
Absolutely, three one five.
Yeah.
Seven nine six four six two three.
Right, I'll give you a call off line, and we'll make arrangements to, to measure the height of your sign, and get something that can work back up, present back to, back to the ZB.
So, Joe, you're asking for a rendering of what the sign is gonna look like in relation to the buildings and the lots that are there, correct?
Yes.
Patty?
Yep.
Um, I just wanted to mention that I don't, I don't see that the recording button is on.
It was.
It is, okay.
I just double-checked what it was. It says that it is.
Okay, usually, it shows up on my screen, but that's okay, thank you, sorry.
It was our attorney, by the way, so.
Yes, hi, sorry.
Always a good idea. I'm absolutely fine with that.
Okay, so Mr. Stubly, Mr. Pierce, we're good with this, we're gonna table this, and then we'll get a better, you know, picture of what's going on, and we'll come back next month and take a look at everything.
Sounds good, thank you.
Great, hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So Patty, we'll make a motion to table this, we gotta, is that what we're doing, or?
Yes, can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to table.
This is Frank, I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ZB case twenty-five dash twenty, thirteen eleven South Street, San Huskic. Pursuant to section two dash two nine, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to erect a fence at the above referenced location. Okay. Who's here from thirteen eleven South Street, anyone?
Yes, this is Marala, his daughter, she's right here.
Okay.
You don't speak English.
Okay. So you need a, a fence, correct?
Yes, he likes to put the fence, he thinks that it looks better and more privacy.
All right. Yeah, let's get a couple pictures, if we got them.
So this is the property, it's on the curve, and, uh, but Mary. And he's proposing to put it along the inside edge of the land.
Of the wall, okay.
Yep.
All right. Very nice. Okay. Any questions, board? Anyone here for? Against? How about a motion?
I'll make the motion approval.
Second. Okay, go ahead, second, all in favor?
Wait, wait, hold on.
Aye.
There you go, you're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you.
A fence permit.
Who seconded that?
It was, I think we're going over the second, I'll give it to Patty.
I beat you.
This is like Jeopardy, who could push the button?
You'll have the fence permit from the codes department, please call them tomorrow, three one five seven nine two zero one six three.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Okay, ZB case number twenty-six twenty, six oh one Mapledale Ave, Eric Mictorovich. Pursuant to section two dash two nine, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct a shed at the above referenced location.
Hi, I'm Eric Mictorovich, I'm seeking to build a shed in my backyard.
Ten by twenty shed, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, where's that gonna go there? Oh, you got it all, uh?
I have it all marked out. So it will be in the corner of my lot. The peak will be fourteen feet high, and from my property line, from both property lines, it's also gonna be fourteen feet away.
Okay, any questions, board?
Is the shed gonna match the existing exterior of your house, as in color?
Yes, my house is white, has siding on it, and will be, it's gonna, it's gonna match to it, yes.
Okay.
There's gonna be, uh, uh, a seven by seven garage door on the left, ten foot side, and then a door in the front with two windows. So, so shed looks aesthetically pleasing too.
Anyone here for?
Yes, I'm for it.
And your name?
My name?
Gary Casey, C.A.S.E.Y.
What was your first name, I'm sorry?
Gary, G.A.R.Y.
And do you live in the area, Gary?
Yes, I live at six hundred Mapledale, I'm right across the street.
Okay. Anyone here against?
Uh, this is DePalma, can I ask a few questions, I'm at the house right behind.
I'm sorry, your name was?
DePalma Edward, and I'm at four four eight Elmdale Ave. And if you look at the pictures there, it's the brown house.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I think we're just, um, there's a buried creek that's right there, you'll see the hump there, it's on that picture right there, on the other side of a chain link fence. Uh, we've been, we had had a lot of flooding back then, that was taken care of with that creek. I don't know how high this is gonna be raised up, and if that's gonna cause any flooding issues, or any water backup issues. But that's just a one concern, and I was wondering how high this was going to be built up. If it is gonna be fourteen feet, is that gonna be from the grade that exists now, or is it gonna be built up and then add from the new build?
So it's gonna be, um, from grave, so total, total height will be fourteen feet, and it'll be on, on four by four posts, so in case in the future, if anything does ever happen, it would be moved.
It will be what?
In case in the future, any flooding does ever happen, it will be on four by fours.
Well, I think, the height of the shed's gonna be twelve feet. But it's gonna be.
The, the, the peak, the peak will be fourteen feet high. So it would be eight-foot walls, additional four feet for the roof.
Can I ask a question, Gary Casey?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, is it correct that he was just talking about that in the back of this proposed shed, I believe? So it doesn't interfere with, uh, with that at all?
No, so it's between the fence, it's between the fence line.
No, you see that picture right there? There's the fence, the chain link fence, and directly behind that, there's a raised graded area. The city basically put a brick, a creek in there and covered it. The city basically put a brick in there and covered it. So that is, um, basically a water underneath. And so if this is built up fairly high, I'm just worried about the water backing up. It could just kind of pool into my yard or my lot that's right behind it.
So.
Some concern there. If it's raised high, if you're not gonna put on any kind of bed where it's not raised at all, that's fine. That's the only big question.
Yeah, it won't be raised up higher. It won't be raised up. I'm sorry, you can go. So, you know, the highest level that I have it at, where the shed's gonna be, that will be, uh, uh, height where it's gonna stay. I'm, I'm not gonna be adding any more soil or any more fill just to bring it up higher.
Okay, all right. Like I said, that was, that was my concern as far as how high you go. If you're gonna keep it as great right now where it is.
Yes.
Then that, that should be fine. Um, one other quick question, I'm just wondering how you're gonna get back and forth. Is this gonna be anyway paved? You're gonna have a, some kind of pathway to back and forth to the shed or no?
No, I'm gonna build.
Oh, what?
Can you repeat that one more time?
I just wanted to know, this is way behind in the yard. Is there gonna be any kind of pathway that goes out to the street?
No, no, there won't be.
Okay, that's fine. Those are the questions I had. Thank you.
Hey, anyone else? For or against? Board roster, any more questions or? How about a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. You're all set.
You'll have to get a shed permit from the codes department. Again, give them a call tomorrow. One five seven nine two zero one six three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Have a great evening.
Yep, you too.
ZBA case twenty-seven twenty, three oh six Hartford Place. Applicant Michael Fiori, pursuant to section two dash two nine, the applicant is seeking area variance in order to construct an addition to an existing garage at the above referenced location.
I'm here. This is Mike.
Man?
This is Mike Fiori. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So you can see, you can see from this photo, he's looking to add this, um, eight by thirty-three onto the existing garage in the rear of his property. Um, you can see from this photo, that is the existing garage. He's coming towards the house with the addition. And that's what it currently looks like.
And we're gonna add on to this or we're gonna take, take this down or?
No, if I can speak for a minute?
Sure.
If you're looking, if you're looking at the garage slash barn, there's three sets of plywood doors, plywood chip doors and basically it looks like a barn. So I'd, what I'd like to do is come out eight feet with a pitch roof that is perpendicular to the barn roof and then put a sixteen foot garage door on it with a window and a walk through door and some side windows. And all that match the existing structure. Trying to make it look, go from a barn to a garage.
Garage?
Yeah. The, uh, property, the, the structure property on either side doesn't change and, and the, the distance doesn't change and the only distance changes is between the garage and my house. It's eight foot shorter.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Fiori?
Yeah, Mike, this is Mike. Wolf, you're building toward your house onto the driveway?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's fine. Yeah, so we'll, they'll look aesthetically much better. I, I was just making sure I understood what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So what way are we putting for an exterior covering in this?
Um, it's either gonna be the clapboard that the barn is or, uh, probably a T-one eleven or a metal siding, you know, vertical siding, or the clapboard that existing barn is, whatever is probably easier and cheaper.
And will you be, if you do T-one eleven or if you do metal, are you gonna do the rest of it or are you gonna do the, you're gonna leave the clapboard that's there?
Yeah, no, the, the, the whole barn is, uh, batting board. I think that's what you call it, the board with the, the little piece in between the seams. So no, I wouldn't. I'm not gonna do the, a different covering on the addition and then do the entire other structure. No. I'm gonna try to match it best as possible with style and color. The barn right now is, uh, light gray. Mike, then Mike Wolf, then, I, I think we just don't want the structure to look chopped up. Is there any way you can continue the board and bat onto the addition or, or stay with the T-eleven so the whole project is wood? Sure. I mean, like I said, I was thinking different, the ease of it and the, uh, cost of it. I mean, I can do the baton or, or the T-one eleven.
Well, whatever, whatever you do, we want it to look uniform.
Absolutely. I, I'm trying to improve my property, going from a barn to a garage. My whole point is a little additional room and aesthetics. Okay, I realize fence is a concern, but if you would, if you would try to keep it consistent and board and bat in your T-eleven so that once it was painted, it, it looked like a singular structure, that would be something I'd be looking for. Absolutely. It's not a problem.
Okay, any other questions, board?
No, I'm good.
Good. Anyone here for? Against? No one? Any motion?
Yeah, I'll motion with approve, Joe, but I'd like to see the structure consistent in its sightings.
Yep, put, you could put contingencies on it. You wanna finish what?
Yeah, so I do motion to approve if we are, if the homeowner's gonna do that.
Any motions or a second, rather?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set. Again, you have a building permit and that will be through the codes department. Three one five seven nine two zero one six three.
Thank you. Have a nice night.
You too. Hey, ZBA case number twenty-eight dash twenty, eleven fourteen Herkimer Road, applicant Miley Nugent. Pursuant to section two dash two nine, the applicant is seeking a major home occupation permit in order to operate a nail salon at the above referenced property. Is anyone here from eleven fourteen Herkimer Road?
Hello, yes, uh, this is Kim and Miley Nugent.
And you wanna put a nail salon in your home?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be restricted to the garage. Um, my mom currently owns a nail salon and she's scaled down to be the only employee working out of the garage and she doesn't even wanna put a sign up in the front. Um, wants to make very little changes to the garage itself. Hate that.
Uh, how busy is your nail salon now?
Well, it, it, right now we have about four or five employees.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna go from four to five employees down to one?
Yes. Correct.
And how many customers you think you're gonna be handling? Cause all nail salon dicey look awful busy. That's, that's why I'm asking.
Oh, right, but you know, right after now, with after the COVID, we don't have a lot of business at the farm.
So what happens once this COVID, once this COVID, uh, ends and, uh, you get busy again?
And only maybe two at most. I got all the driving right now, so I need to do two people.
Is this the house right there, right that we're looking at straight ahead?
Yes.
Patty? And that's where, that's, we wanna put a nail salon in the garage. Is that correct?
Yes.
And where, where is your nail salon currently located?
In North Utica.
Or, or? Where in, in the shopping center or where, where in North Utica?
At shopping center, but not shopping center.
So it's, it's in the shopping center in North Utica, Joe.
Uh, and you're only gonna have one client at a time. All right.
Right.
All right.
She's looking, my mom is looking at like semi retired. That's what it is. She's trying to scale that right now.
Okay, do you do nails?
I used to do. But, uh, I'm actually, she just doesn't speak English as well, so I'm here to question.
Okay, no, that's, that's okay.
And she hasn't purchased this house yet, correct?
No, we're looking to purchase, but she wanted to make sure.
I wanna do thing legal. I don't want you.
Yep, we appreciate that.
Everything's aligned before she continues her procedure.
Who's got questions? Anyone?
I heard you mentioned signage, but I, I didn't hear what you said about it, so I apologize. What, what would you be doing with signage?
Oh, she wouldn't even want to put a sign. She wants to, in partially retired or semi-retirement, down the clients that she's already known in years. So she doesn't even really necessarily wanna put up any sort of advertising or anything. She just wants to keep it low.
Joe, I have a couple of letters to put into the record.
Okay.
The first one is from Donna, Donna dot Conti at Hotmail dot com. It says, I was really upset to hear referring to zoning on twenty-eight dash twenty, uh, eleven fourteen Herkimer Road. I lived here for over forty-nine years, lost my husband. This is a residential neighborhood and my neighbor and I are very upset about this nail salon. We vote absolutely no. Please take my vote. This is Donna Conti, eleven twenty Herkimer Road. I have another letter, uh, from Brian A. Gaetano, B. Gaetano at dreamscape dot com. Uh, to whom it may concern, my mother is a resident at eleven eighteen Herkimer Road. She received a notification last week from the city of Utica regarding case number twenty-eight dash twenty, eleven fourteen Herkimer Road. A party is interested in purchasing the home and making the garage into a nail salon. She is not in favor. Thank you. Also, I have another one. Um, hi, I support Miley Nugent's application for a major home occupation permit in order to operate a nail salon at the above referenced property. Me and my wife have lived at eleven twelve Herkimer Road for close to twenty-four years. We would be direct neighbors and we would have no objections to her request. As a lifelong resident of Utica, it is wonderful to see the resurgence of the city. The city has given both large and small businesses the opportunity to thrive and prosper. I hope the city of Utica, Miley Nugent, every consideration to fulfill her dream. Thank you kindly, Mark and Kim Schrader.
And what was their address?
It was eleven twelve Herkimer Road.
Herkimer Road, right next door to that.
Yes.
Yes, and, and I, I hate getting a jack. I apologize. This is Mark Schrader speaking. I did speak with Patty this afternoon and I do live directly across the, um, the old Baker's Greenhouse, which I'm very happy to see occupied by, uh, the floral shop, uh, vegetable shop and, and whatever else is going on back there. And it's wonderful. There's a lot of traffic. But I've been on this road for twenty-four years and the house shakes, rails and rolls. But as progress goes, there's no reason for me to complain to any city officials or anybody else about that progress. There's a Mount Redeemer Church down the road that I'm happy to see prospering. And also three or four properties up, there's another church with a lot of diversity where people come every Saturday morning and it's awfully nice to see. So. And then there's a rental property, two houses down from me. The, uh, numberings get, get, get confusing. Herkimer Road, as you may know, I believe it's got a ten-ten. It's occupied by four or five, um, renters. It's all been good. Everything's fine. Live and let live and, and, and I also support that also. So. Those are my two cents. I thank you for your time and I hope I wasn't too inconsiderate.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
And again, Miley, yeah, so that, yeah, I said enough, I guess.
Okay, so do we have anyone else, uh, for or against? Any other questions, board? Any thoughts on, on, on this?
How many cars can you fit in the driveway? Because there, there's not parking on Herkimer Road. So.
There is.
Do you see this bump here, Frank?
I'm sorry.
Let me see if I pull up a better photo. See, there's.
They got a parking area right there, Frank.
Oh, they, they got one on the side. Okay.
Yeah.
What a nice turnaround too. So you're only gonna do one customer at a time?
Yeah, she would only be doing one customer at a time. I mean, with the COVID rules as they are now.
Now, does that mean, you know, one cus, like there could be one customer at a time. You're only gonna work on one customer, but there's gonna be four or five other customers waiting in the, in, uh?
No, we take appointments, so we only do one and I only do one and then, you know, only by myself. I can't do so many and I take appointments, so maybe one, maybe two, three customers a day.
Matt, you got something to say?
Yeah, I, I mean, Joe, I got no issues with this, honestly. Uh, as long as they keep it to, I would say, one technician, including the owner and one customer at a time. Uh, uh, I realize, you know, what's going on in this world right now and, uh, these things be, uh, you know, gonna be happening more and more. People are doing and making fit of what they can, uh, uh, to occupy, uh, work. So if, if, if they could do that and, uh, and, you know, they say, if we could put it in, uh, I mean, in the paper here, I would, uh, I would support it.
Okay, now we're, Baker's Greenhouse is across the street from, right?
Yeah, it's right across the street. I just looked it up, right across the street. So there, there are plenty of other businesses on this road that are much larger scale than it, it.
Than this.
So.
Okay. All right. Any motions then?
I'd make a motion to approve it, uh, you know. I'd make a motion to approve it, uh, you know, on those contingencies.
With the, uh, one customer at a time?
One customer and one technician, including the owner at, at.
Yeah. Okay, we understand that. Are we clear with that?
Yes, I understand. So one customer contingency.
Just to make it clear, it's one customer with nobody waiting.
Yeah.
One car at a time, basically, is what they're.
Yeah, and that's how she should be operating now, any appointment. So there's really no wait times, even in our salon now.
Okay.
Alright. How about a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, you're all set. Good luck.
You'll have to get your home occupation permit through codes. So give them a call in the morning, uh, three one five seven nine two zero one six three. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much to the committee, for the zoning board, and I just want to mention, you know, Utica gives everybody an opportunity. And what we have going on in Herkimer Road is very, is doing very well, but with the greenhouses, and the, and the occupied and not occupied, of course, because we know. So once again, thanks so much for the consideration and the thought you gave into this process. Have a pretty good night.
Thank you.
You have everyone.
Patty, wait, one, one thing here now. This variance. Patty, this, this variance goes to Miley, right? The applicant only.
Yep, and to the applicant only.
Okay. Okay, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, ZBA case twenty-nine dash twenty, sixteen oh five Genesee Street, applicant Christine Martin. Pursuant to section two dash two-nine of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica, the applicant is spe, is seeking a special use permit in order to operate a community residence at the above referenced location.
Hi.
Patty, what do we, what do we have here from sixteen oh five?
This is Chris Martin. I, yeah, uh, seeking a special use variance to open short-term inpatient addiction recovery facility at what is now the first Presbyterian Church at sixteen oh five Genesee Street. As well as nearby hospitals, um.
Christine, we've, we've got a, a lousy connection here. We, we didn't understand the word you said.
Oh, okay, let me try to read it over. Let me try again.
There you, that's much better.
Is that better? Okay, so I'm seeking a special use variance to open a short-term inpatient addiction recovery facility at what is known now as the First Presbyterian Church at sixteen oh five Genesee Street. This area is currently occupied by medical professional offices as well as hospitals nearby. Um, ours is an inpatient facility, which will have minimal impact on the neighboring community. The only changes that we'll have to the exterior of the building is to, uh, put a new sign up and we'll actually use the existing, uh, sign structure, so there won't be any changes to the sign type. Um, and then also, we were asking to install a privacy fence, which will be located in the back parking lot within the parking lot, so it won't be, uh, clearly visible from the neighboring streets, Scott Street and Paxton Street. Um, inpatient facility, this isn't your, you know, what people consider the stereotype of, of addiction recovery uh, facility is, you know, ours is not going to be like that. Ours is an inpatient facility, which means that our clients will be picked up and dropped off at our facility by appointment only. We will be cooperating with, uh, local facilities that are, uh, where people that are going through detox will then be transported to our facility privately and discreetly through our, our rear entrance. Um, and, uh, you know, we will not be offering emergency detox services. We will not be administering outpatient medication, so there will be virtually zero foot traffic to and from the facility. We'll be, uh, pretty much invisible to the neighboring community, um, you know, as far as our clients though. Um, you know, the, the communities in desperate need of this, a quality inpatient facility like this and the, and the Presbyterian Church is just a, a really a perfect fit for, uh, what we need for the, uh, space requirements. Um, we plan to use the existing school as our residential wing, where we will house forty beds, uh, men, women. Um, we'll also be servicing pregnant women and, um, which is unique to, uh, the area. Um, a chapel will be used for admissions and our nurses' stations. The community room will become a cafeteria, a fitness room and a gymnasium. The mansion will become our, our, uh, will that, the mansion will be where our group therapy sessions and special interest activities will take place. Like music therapy, art therapy, cooking classes. This is really gonna be a, a facility that is very unique to the area. A place where people are gonna wanna send their loved ones, um, that are struggling with addiction. Um, and the sanctuary will use for guest speakers and large group presentations.
I can't hear.
We really have to do very little reconstruction to the building. Um, we're gonna maintain, uh, the, the building that's there.
You know, I just about had it.
Who's this?
He must be after me. He didn't want to wait anymore.
Oh, okay.
Um, that, that's pretty much the summary. I mean, I could, I could talk at length about the type of service and how it's a unique facility and how desperately it's needed in the area. Um, it was an idea, uh, this, this whole process, um, was inspired by a personal experience. Um, I'm an entrepreneur and a real estate developer and my sister is a physician and together we have decided that this is something that needs to come to our, to our area.
So this is Dr. Adrian, your sister, Christine? You said it? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you just talk to, um, the staffing, how that's gonna work?
I'm sorry.
In regard to the staffing, how many you'll have on?
Yeah, Brian Frank is here and he can, uh, speak to staffing. Um, but we are gonna be a twenty-four hour service, but, uh, most of our staffing is between seven AM and eleven PM. Um, and that, that's when we would see employees coming in on, uh, hot street entrance, um, daily. And then at night, we would have overnight staff available, um, consisting of, uh, LPNs, client supervisors and security staff.
Brian Frank, we're, we're talking about a total of fifteen new jobs in the area. Um, probably at most thirty staff members, uh, in the building at any given time.
We've got to show one of them.
And then, of course, fewer staff members during the overnight and on weekends.
I can't hear.
Were you guys able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, the board?
No.
I do have a question. You know, are patients free to leave during the day, uh, outside of these and?
Uh, patients are, yeah, this is, patients are free to leave, but they need to be, much like a hospital, they have to be processed and discharged and, uh, we would provide transportation to and from the facility.
So it's not, once they're there, they're there to be treated, not leaving from the day until the evening.
It's a thirty day, thirty day, a short-term stay, which is thirty days, possibly sixty days, depending on the treatment. Uh, but they're there for thirty days. Um, it's, they're not in, you know, they're, they're not, it's not a prison. They can, they're, they're free to leave by choice, but they need to be discharged and processed and, um, we will have security in place and we will be actually driving people and providing the transportation to and from.
Oh.
Anyone here for?
I have a letter, Joe, that needs to be read. If there's no, there's nobody else on the, on the call for four.
Go ahead, Patty.
To the members of the zoning board, I am ready to express my excitement with the upcoming sale of the First Presbyterian Church building and especially for the use that it is intended. Our congregation has owned that property for a hundred years and we have been a congregation in the greater Utica community for two hundred and twenty-five years. Legacy has constantly included a commitment to providing services just with community needs. The idea of the rescue mission began with a prayerful concern in our congregation regarding the problem alcoholism causing individuals in the community. We perceive this sale to be an answer to our prayers and continuation of our legacy in Utica. As a pastor, I am aware that there are problematic issues that arise as a result of addiction and abuse. I also realize that there is a need for more rehabilitation programs in order to assist in the recovery of individuals so that they may be healthy and productive members of the community. It's exciting to envision the ways in which the use of our church building will continue to change lives and improve the community. We are also very pleased that the property will continue to be maintained as a beautiful historical landmark in Utica. I hope that the way will be made easily clear to approve the plans set forward. Sincerely, Reverend Gene Ambalas.
Okay. About anyone, uh, here against? Okay. Any motions?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, Ned, right?
Yes.
Yes. Any second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Everybody.
Alright.
Hi.
Okay.
Good luck.
Good luck, Mr. Martin, your ask, Ned.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, Christine, you'll have to get your building permit through the codes department. I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yep, yep, I'm, uh, I'm in contact with Danny Cozo. I'll, I'll reach out to him.
Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Having Gulick Street. Applicant Himsu Kulovak, pursuant to two dash, uh, two-nine of the zoning ordinance of the city of Utica. The applicant is seeking an area variance in order to erect a fence at the above referenced location. Okay, who's here from sixteen eleven Gulick?
Is anybody on the call?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now. What is your name?
Himsu, H-I-M-Z-U, Kulovak.
Okay. If you want to just explain to the board what it is that you're looking to do, please?
I'm looking to put the fence in, uh, upfront, partially. Six foot height and, uh, probably one-third of the property on west side. And, uh, I'm gonna put on the east side, I mean, from my, uh, uh, blacktop, uh, back to, to the house, you know.
You, you wanna run it along the sidewalk? The inside edge of the sidewalk?
Yes.
So, as you'll see on your screen, the yellow highlighted is where he's looking to put the fence.
Fence.
Patty, can you go back to the other picture that showed his house and the one next to it?
Yes, I will try. That one?
Yeah, this.
That house, that picture?
Yeah, yeah, that one. No, it looks like there's already a little fence between you and your neighbor. It looks like a little four-foot fence. Is that a chain link or?
Looks like a chain link, doesn't it, from here?
Yeah, it's either a chain-linked fence there.
Um, well, I, I don't know, a six-foot solid wood along the sidewalk, I, I, they, they, I don't see that happening.
No. I can see going back to where that other fence is and going up. He just has to mow on the other side.
Any other questions? Anyone here for? Against?
Yes, I'm here, uh.
What's your name?
This is, my name is Frank Manoiero.
Can you spell that for me, Frank? Hey, did you, you submitted a letter?
Yes, I did, but you can discard the letter. I can tell you, uh, what my, uh, problems are.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I, I dealt with stockade fence. I had a couple of them. After a couple of years, they looked awful. And this is a beautiful, beautiful, uh, area here. And I feel that if he put a six-foot stockade fence right next to the, uh, sidewalk, after, especially after a couple of years, first of all, it's gonna look like a jailhouse. Second, after a couple of years, it's gonna look like a barn. So, you know, it, it, my idea is if he, if he could, maybe he can start from the west corner of his house to the, to the chain link fence with a, with a, maybe a plastic fence, you know, that looks nice.
A vinyl?
Yeah, the stockade fence, the way he wants to put, I know in a couple of years, it's gonna look awful. And we have a beautiful area here. I know he's got two little kids. But, you know, I don't want, I don't want, th, this place is beautiful we got here. I don't wanna ruin it, you know, by a, by a fence that is gonna decay within a couple of years.
And Frank, you're at sixteen oh six, correct?
Right, I'm right across the street.
Okay.
That will, that will be awful to look at there all the time.
Okay, anybody else?
Anyone else against?
I have two other letters. Anybody?
You got two letters to read in, Patty?
Yep. Um, the first one is, um, William and Jackie Thibault. We are opposed to granting a variance in case of ZBA case number thirty dash twenty that would allow a six-foot fence at the sidewalk parallel. We do not want any fence sidewalks in this neighborhood, uh, sixteen oh eight Gulick Street. The next one is, my name is Luke Medici. I live at sixteen oh four Gulick Street. This is a residential area. The person at sixteen eleven Gulick Street wants to construct a six-foot stockade fence seventy feet along the city sidewalk. 70 feet along the city sidewalk right across his house, I am totally against this. As it reduces pretty value, the ordinance only allows the three foot. The fence will be four feet in front of fire hydrant. Were a fire, there's a way a fire truck to get his house. It should be against fire department codes and most of all, state zoning ordinance allows three foot.
Hey. Well.
As you see, I don't believe this is gonna be blocking fire hydrant, the fire hydrant.
No, yeah. But regardless, the fence still can't go along the sidewalk, it, it's too much. Anybody got any ideas? Maybe split the difference, uh. From the distance from the house to the sidewalk, uh. Come in eight, 10 feet off of the sidewalk.
Is he interested in putting it vinyl in the front or?
Or just deny it, I mean.
My question is, is he stuck on a six foot stockade, I mean, uh. Would it be open to like a four foot picket fence or?
Or vinyl?
Or vinyl or something to that where?
Mr. Kulovak, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, what are your ideas on changing the style of the fence?
It doesn't matter, I can put vinyl, I can put the. Concrete, I can put anything, you know, it doesn't matter, it's up to neighbors, you know, if they like gold, then I could put gold, you know? So, I can put vinyl, doesn't matter, you know?
We appreciate your consideration, that's very nice of you.
Anything they like. I mean, I just need, I just need to put fence because I have two small kids, you know? And that's what I was thinking to put the wood because after probably five to 10 years, you know, I can, you know, put down. That's much easier than vinyl or something else, but I don't care, you know, I don't need fence, you know, I don't need fence, any fence, you know? But I have two small kids, so it's very hard to keep them, you know, in my backyard, so. I just need for a few years, you know, that fence, but I know it's not gonna stay forever, you know, if I stay there, you know?
Well. He's more than making questions, so let's give him something to work with there.
He obviously needs a fence, but the, the expense difference between six foot stockade and a six foot vinyl is astronomical. Can we borrow four foot stockade?
I'd be happy if it came off the sidewalk quite a bit.
What are you looking for, Joe? I mean, we just decreased the property size a little, but get him a couple, three feet off the sidewalk?
I would say, it's 30 feet from the edge of the house to the sidewalk, we split it somehow. At least, at least eight or 10 feet back off sidewalk. It's got 122 feet along the side property.
Let me ask this, at what point off the sidewalk does he not even need a variance?
He has, he has to line with the edge, front edge of his house. He put a fence in line with the front edge of his house, he didn't, he doesn't need a variance, he would just need a, a fence.
All right, I, I gotta, but we just split the difference.
Okay.
What do we got, 30 feet?
Yep.
So, what'd you say Frank, 15 feet?
15.
15.
That applies to both, that applies to both sections of fence? My drawing is two yellow lines.
It's a six foot fence, so either wood, vinyl, whatever he wants to put along the 15 feet off the sidewalk.
All right.
Unless she got other ideas, any other ideas?
Well, can we give an option to, if he wanted to do the vinyl?
We. All those, no, it's gone.
Anybody there?
Hold on, can we give Ned? Go ahead, Ned.
I'm saying, give him an option if he wa, if he wanted to do the vinyl with like a four foot vinyl, you know, solid or picket. With being, you know, four feet, five feet off the sidewalk, I would be okay with that, or. You know, setting a fence with the wood one solid 6 feet at 15. So, you know, I choose between us to, you know, maybe, you know, come up with the one or the other.
So, Mr. Kulovak, understand, understand what Mr. Smadjik is saying?
Yeah, the only thing I can say.
What would you rather, they're look, they're looking for you to either go 15 feet back from the edge of the sidewalk with your six foot stockade? Or possibly going about four feet or five feet off the edge of the sidewalk with like a four foot vinyl fence?
No, I, I, I think, I just wanna, I just wanna do a longer sidewalk or line up with the house. I don't want to do in the middle, you know, between sidewalks in my house, you know?
Oh, so you line up with the house?
Okay, if something, if neighbors, if neighbors don't like, you know, it's not a problem, I don't need to, I don't need to go along the sidewalk, you know? I line up with the house, so.
So, are, are you looking to do the vinyl fence? Four feet off of the sidewalk, away from the sidewalk, or are you looking to do the stockade 15 feet away from the sidewalk?
Four, uh, four, four feet from sidewalk?
And that would have to be a vinyl fence?
And how tall?
Four feet.
Four feet. Oh, no, 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 I don't want to do that.
Well. But you, you did say you would go off the side, off the side of your house?
Yes.
In which case you would need a variance, right?
If you went off the side of the house, you don't need a variance, if you go off the side edge of your house, stay in line with, with your house. Then you don't need a variance, it's the reason, the reason you need a variance is because you're coming out towards the sidewalk.
Well, yeah, Patty, I talked to you, you told me, you know, if I line up with the house, I can put six, six foot tall fence.
That is correct.
If I, yeah, if I, if I, if I wanna go along the sidewalk, I have, I need, I need the zoning permit, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, and now, my, it's simple, I, I'm not asking for anything, you know? Only, my, my question is, can I put the six feet tall along sidewalk?
They're asking you to split the difference, so to split the distance from the sidewalk to the house, that would be 15 feet back from the inside edge of the sidewalk. That's what they're agreeing to. So, it gives you, it gives you an additional 15 feet.
I just, I just can do along sidewalk or line up with the house, that's it.
Then go with the house.
Well, line up with the house, no, wait, line up with the house.
For 15 feet if you wanted it.
You don't want that.
No, I know, I'm just explaining to him that, that he can have it 15 feet out from the edge of the house if he chooses. Board, I would make the determination, I would make the determination that he, if you all agree, that he can have it 15 feet. And if he, and if he chooses not to, he can go ahead and do it, you know, in, in accordance with the ordinance that states that he can have it off the edge of the house.
Any motion for that? I'll make a motion, go ahead, who, who's gonna make it? Go ahead.
Who was making the motion?
Was there a motion? If not, Patty, I'll make a 15 feet. Back or just go ahead with, with the, what's in place now.
Okay.
Any second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, interface, come in.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Kulovak, do you understand what they stated? So, you can either put it back 15 feet from the edge of the sidewalk, your six foot high stockade fence? Or you can just go ahead and get your fence permit and put it along the edge of your house, whichever you wish to do, they're giving you those two options. But you do have to get a fence permit, so call the codes department, 315.
Yeah, okay, okay, no problem.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, have a nice evening.
You too, thank you.
ZBA case 31-20, 137 Higby Road, applicant Timothy Julian. Pursuant to day section 29, the applicant is seeking a major home occupation permit in order to operate an aesthetic skincare clinic at the above referenced properties. Mr. Julian, are you online?
I am online, can you hear me?
Here, turn.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna start this and then let my wife take over. Um, as you can see, I live at the corner of Higby and Dunham Road, South Utica. I've been here since 2003 and it's really take great pride in the house, it's on a 150 by 150 corner lot. Um, the garage side of the house is on Dunham Road, so basically you would turn off of Higby, head north. And your first right hand turn would be into the driveway, as you see in the pictures there. Uh, the garage through the years is not a, deemed as a usable garage by me, I have a pickup truck with a plow on it. Um, it's extremely, uh, it's just too small. Garage itself is 19 and a half feet by 19 and a half feet. Uh, interior dimensions, so basically it became a catch-all as many of our garages do. So, um, we talked about, my wife and I talked about improvements to the house and creating a more formal entryway into the house, mudroom. And getting rid of the garage in general. That conversation took on a, a whole new meaning in the earlier part of this year when her business was greatly impacted by the COVID pandemic. Um, and I did begin construction, I did get a building permit and began construction as a, basically what would be a family room for a person who would purchase this house in the future. Um, as well as a mudroom and formal entryway. But at this time, we're asking for an in-home occupancy for her to do her aesthetic business. At the, at the property rather than at the business location that we had, uh, previous to this. And at this time, I'd like to give her the opportunity to speak to let you guys know what it is that she does, so that way she can bring that beauty to that.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, so I am a skin therapist.
I'm Ashley.
My name is Lisa Julian.
Thank you.
Hi, so I do, I'm a skin therapist, I have a license, I went to school for almost a half a year to receive my license. And I work mostly on acne clients and anti-ageing. Um, my business was highly impacted by the closure and I am no longer able to work in my current location, which is a 1600 square foot building on Genesee Street. Um, like Miley, um, she is looking to move her business at home and I'm looking to do the same thing. Um, I'm looking just to see a few clients a day. Um, we'll have a private entrance to the studio for each client to come in. Um, I will have selected business hours, I will not work weekends. Um, there will be no waiting area nor will there be any clients waiting in their car to get into the next appointment. I highly comply with the guidelines for disinfection, so it's, we have to allow 30 minutes between each client, um, anyway. Um, it would be a Monday through Friday business approximately 11 to 4, about three to four clients a day.
Any question, close?
No.
Let's see here. Tim, so you're gonna get rid of both garage doors and just complete it, move one?
Uh, yeah, both, actually Joe, both garage doors are already gone.
They're gone?
It was part of the, uh, the building permit I applied for. Um, if you can see in the picture, you see the two garage doors and then directly to the right of the garage doors, there was what we used as an entryway, um, into the house, uh, previous. Um, the two garage doors are gone, the garage door on the right has been configured to a more formal entryway. Uh, I want to kind of match it up, there are some pictures of the front of the house and I want to kind of match it up to the front of the house, so it's more, more of a formal look to it. Um, and the, the, uh, former entryway will be converted to an interior closet, uh, for the house, which we don't really have a closet there at the point, at this point in time. Um, and then the other garage door, the one that's configured to the left of that, uh, has been replaced with two, um, windows that match the windows in the rest of the house. And, uh, of course, the siding's been taken off and it will be, uh, be re-sided with a, you know, newer material. And, uh, you know, exterior lighting, um, you know, at, at this time also, uh, in the application, I did put in that we were gonna do perhaps a one foot by one foot sign and I don't believe there's a need for that. Um, uh, so that's.
It would be very discreet, no signage, um, maybe a car at the driveway all the time.
The driveway itself is actually capable of holding four cars as it is, so even if I was home and, uh, and Lisa were working. Uh, we could still easily accommodate the one client that would be there.
Okay. Any other, board, any questions?
No.
Hey, anyone here for? Against?
Uh, this is council member Sal Friend, I represent the board, I'm not so much picking up as I'm against this. Uh, but as I was asked by a couple of neighbors representing, uh, they prefer to remain anonymous, so at some point when you find it appropriate, I would like to say that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Friend. But from what I understand, uh, you're representing a couple of the neighbors who are against it, is that correct?
That's right, who have concerns, I don't want to go so far as to say that they're against it, they have some concerns and I, um, they asked me to represent those concerns.
And what are those concerns?
So, you have a letter from Angela Jivannetti, who I, and I believe that you're gonna be reading that into the record, is that correct?
Yes.
So, Ms. Friend, were the neighbors concerned?
So, the concerns were, um, that this is a residential neighborhood and, um, essentially the concern of Angela Jivannetti and others, uh, is that we're sort of entering into a slippery slope kind of situation. Uh, this is a neighborhood which has not a single commercial, uh, enterprise of any sort. And the concern is simply that we are stepping onto a slippery slope, um, at the bottom of which this large road area has become marginalized.
All right, one, one question that they had and I think that will start to be accepted.
This is horrible.
Ms. Friend, it's hard to understand, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the letter and I believe what she is that they're reiterating what this letter is saying. It says, Dear Sal, letter expresses concern for a zoning variance request at 137 Higby Road, Utica. In the 20 years of being a resident in the Ridgewood area, we have seen many properties change owners. The neighborhood has remained desirable and charming. As such, property value is having, while other areas of Utica diminished many considerably. Ridgewood area has increased in value because of the zoning of R1, hence in care of said properties and the desire of the homeowners to do so. While the zoning variance at 137 Higby Road may appear to be a minor request to stem, what happens when others situation request a zoning variance? If you deny the request, will they cry favor to... If you say yes, how many chances do you grant? Eventually, the face of the neighborhood will change into a commercialized area. Homes will become houses, and it will no longer be the South Utica neighborhood that pays a substantial portion of the taxes. Our concern is solely for the integrity of the neighborhood and the value of the properties it encompasses. However, should the zoning board fit to grant the variance request, please consider the following. Signage should be kept small and discreet. I one seems too large, vertical direction. Any changes to the business profile, examples, hours of operation, number of clinicians, number of clients at a time, etc., must be approved by the zoning board. The business cannot be sold, leased, rented, or to another and physically located at 137 Higby Road. The zoning variance does not transfer with the property. Side note, we were not notified of the request by the City of Utica as our property location exceeds 200-foot notification requirement. Our property is three houses from 137 Higby Road. Our side has doubled in triple lots. The opposite side has single and double. It is concerning that owning more property and paying more taxes doesn't lend to give consideration. 200 feet seems arbitrary. Any variance request, especially one of this type, should be a neighborhood decision or at least a decision made within blocks of the requested variance, not 200 feet. As you may recall, several years ago, there was a request by Stewart at a mini-mart gas station at the corner of Westminster and Nida Street. There was standing room only that night for the board meeting, as many neighbors' residents were present and very concerned that they wanted to maintain a non-commercial environment. Thank you for your consideration. Conscrually, Angela and Gary Givenetti.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Celeste, you can turn your microphone on.
Thank you. So the other...
You got to understand one thing. The variance stays with the applicant, not with the property.
Okay.
Okay, and you have to reapply, don't you? Every three years, five years, what is it?
Three years.
Three years.
You have to renew your permit.
Patty's breaking up. I'm very glad to hear that, because when I asked Commissioner Thomas, he thought that it would follow the property.
No, not on a major home occupation.
That the variance...
It's a major home occupation. It stays with the applicant.
Okay, that's terrific. Thank you for clearing that up.
And the applicant has to reapply every three years?
Not to the zoning board, just through the Code Department.
Through Code. So any violations of the variance become the law. Does that help you?
Very helpful, thank you. I think that does. I think that will put some of the residents, you know, will relieve some of their fears. I also was glad to hear from Lisa Julian that they've decided not to put a small sign, because I know that that...
And I care, you know, three customers a day to a Stewart shop on the corner of O'Nida Street, I mean, you know.
Hello, Angela Givenetti, I'm on the phone. I'm listening, and I'd like to comment to that, okay? I was against it, meaning, and this neighborhood wasn't an uppour to think that it would become commercial in any way. And no disrespect to Senator Lisa, I will say the garage has never looked nicer. It looks beautiful. Our concern, again, is solely for the integrity of the neighborhood, and that zoning variance, where I discussed Stewart, is a block away from his house. So please don't discount that, and it was not, the neighbors are very concerned about putting any type of commercial property in the area. They're concerned that there's somebody else asking for hairdressing shots. There isn't. A nail shot, there isn't, and that's the concern of the neighborhood. The people that I talked with, some of them didn't care, but the ones that did are concerned about granting more variances in this neighborhood. So I spoke my case, and I appreciate, love you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I say a few things?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, first off, I do agree with you. It is very different than a Stewart shop. I think that that's really comparing apples to oranges. Again, I've almost, I've looked at this property and designed this to be, you know, should I sell one day, this will be a beautiful family room, formal entryway, only one formal entryway, for a great house in a great neighborhood that I've had the pleasure to live in for the last 17 years of my life. So, you know, I take this very seriously. This is a huge investment, this home, my life, and it maintains a huge investment. For anyone to think that I would do anything to impact that investment, or theirs, you know, it's just plain wrong. You know, in a brief walk around the neighborhood that I take every day, there are signs up that have real estate brokers in front of there. There's a daycare just around the corner. And there was, yeah, one time a hairdresser down the street, just a few short, just about a block down the street at the bottom of the hill. And I'm not saying that those things shouldn't be looked at on a case-by-case basis, but we are talking about a one-person operation. This would be the equivalent of my wife having three friends over for cups of coffee at three different times of the day. So the impact will be very, very limited. Again, if you could see the house as it sits right now, and it's far from completed, but it looks 10 times better than it did in those pictures right there, I'll tell you that. And, you know, it's going to do nothing but improve the aesthetic quality of the entire neighborhood, and I strive to continue to do that. So I certainly respect Ms. Givenetti for coming forward and for doing so. Tell everyone who she is, because I think that's important, that there's a name that goes along with the concerns. And by all means, you know, the best I can do is tell her that if this were to be approved, I will do everything in my power to continue to make her feel comfortable and proud of her home and proud of her neighborhood, and certainly my wife will do the same thing. She, you know, again, one look at our house lets you know that we take it very seriously, the condition of the house and how it remains, notwithstanding the condition of the garage that we are in the process of rehabbing at this time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Board, any questions for the Julians?
No.
Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it, Joe.
Okay. Contention...
Contention, based on what they're saying, that's true, and that they're going to keep it as one client at a time and by appointment only.
Okay.
I'm going to, you know...
All right. Any questions? Mr. Julian, Mr. Julian, thank you.
Thank you also very much. I appreciate your time.
Have a great evening.
You too, thank you.
ZBAC case number 32-20, 474 Ashwood Avenue, applicant Stephen Fitzgerald. Pursuant to section 2-29, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to install a swimming pool at the above-referenced location. Mr. Fitzgerald, you on?
Actually, this is his wife.
Oh, hi.
How are you?
Okay.
I actually have Steve on FaceTime with us, because he's working.
All right. So you're going to put a swimming pool in? There it is.
Yeah, 21-foot above-ground pool. It's supposed to be eight feet from the property line, but it's only five. The neighbors behind us actually want us to put a slit in the fence so they can come swimming. I tried to spray-paint the areas of the 21-foot of where the pool is going to go.
All right.
As you guys can see from this view, everybody in her neighborhood has a swimming pool. Basically, they've only...
Mr. Fitzgerald, okay.
Except us. I'm sure all of the neighbors, I can't speak for them, however, I don't feel that they're going to have a problem with it.
No, I would say no. I'd be very surprised if any of them showed up against, but...
Exactly, that's a lot of swimming pools.
Okay, any questions, board? Anyone here for? Anyone against? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, good. All in favor? All right.
Hey, we'll have a pool permit, you'll all come.
Enjoy. Good luck.
I had to sit through that whole thing, but you do need a pool permit, and you will need to get that through the Code Department. She has one? Okay, then you are all set.
I had to do this with you first, so in order to...
Have a great...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, board. This was a good meeting.
I know, I didn't think this was going to end.
Say, this is my first one ever, and it was actually very entertaining.
We find it to be very entertaining, too.
Have a good night.
Take care, everybody.
Joe, can you call the meeting?
Yes, Patty.
Can you call the meeting, please?
Let's adjourn the meeting. The meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Good job. Bye, everyone.